Everyone, welcome to the work session of October 6, 2008 for the review of debt service requirements for proposed major capital projects. Before I turn it over to the city manager, I'd like to say that I know that the city manager will be obvious to you, as he and his staff have engaged in a great deal of work to pull this together, and it's timely and appropriate. And with that, I'm sure it'll be interesting to all. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. What you all have before you is a multiple sheets that I'd like to take one at a time, and at the end of the presentation, you'll understand why. It builds on each of the projects that are being proposed. And if you recall, that during the capital improvement process, the capital improvement planning process, I always describe the debt service issues as those that need to come back to the city council for public hearing and vote, and the vote requires two-thirds voted in the city council. So there's basically two readings, a first reading, and then a public hearing and a second reading, and they need to have two-thirds voted in the city council for passage. Now typically, I'll come back throughout the year and recommend certain bonding projects and we move forward, but this year is an unusual year in that in the capital plan, what I will be reviewing in these documents have been identified as capital projects for this year that require some bonding. And so let me start with the first page. The first page deals with the general fund, okay? We're going to be talking about three things tonight: the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. The general fund is your general taxation property taxes. So with the general fund and the existing debt that I show here, I've made certain assumptions as we go into the document. The assumptions are that we would have a 4.25 percent interest rate on all the future debt, that some of the issues are 10-year issues and 20-year issues, that the -- and the way I came up with this is the last 10 years, we have issued debt, we have not had to go beyond 4 percent for a rate. Now, I don't know what the future holds, but if the last 10 years anything indicative, we've hung around 14 -- 4 percent, and the last issue that we did came in at 3.8 percent. So this is because we did go back, we looked at the numbers, and we did check with our financial advisor, and that was a couple weeks ago. He felt comfortable with that, given our history. We're a double-A rated community, and basically, these are general obligation bonds that put forth the full faith and credit of this city. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is that when you -- when we look at these requirements, I anticipate from a cash flow perspective that we will not need to actually go out into the market for about six months. But the purpose of me bringing this forward and getting some of these items on for first and second reading is to get the authorization so that we can go out to bid in the winter months. I cannot go out to bid on a project if I don't have the authorization. So that would be the purpose. The idea of then, most of these projects that you'll see tonight will start in the spring and the summer of next -- in 2009, and I will talk a little bit about short-term financing and those -- some of those opportunities if rates become unstable. Right now, in the municipal market, the rates are unstable, but we expect that that's going to be a short-term situation, but nobody knows, given the liquidity issue that we're all reading and watching on TV endlessly. But let me start off by saying, this is the existing net debt, and it's net debt that once you take off your grants and what we use from our debt service reserve. So basically, if you look on the FY09, you'll see there's $4,900,000. That is the net debt that really affects the tax rate. So if you converted it to this year's tax rate, it'd probably be $1.30 on the rate. So when you look down below, you'll see the percentage of net debt service of budget, and it's 6 percent of the budget. And throughout the last few years, we talk about never going beyond 10 percent. We always want to try to stay 10 percent or below. And what I'll be showing you is you'll see there'll be charts that shows -- there's a graph that shows you if we did nothing for the next 10 years, and we just said, "No, no more debt," which is unreasonable and not realistic, we would drop down in FY18 to 2.3 percent of budget, or about $2.6 million in net debt. Now, moving on to the next page, you'll see that in the purple, you'll see that I added on the $4,775,000 that are what we call the citywide projects. And in the upper right-hand side, you'll see those projects listed. Corporate Drive is one, Scott Avenue Bridge, which $150,000 is being proposed. This is the final installment of $606,000 that we're setting aside for that project, given it's a $3.3 million project. 80 percent of it's coming from the federal government, and 20 percent will be coming from the city, and it is a project that we want to get done in conjunction with the Memorial Bridge. And then we have the gateway improvements, sidewalk improvements, city building improvements, and city street improvements. Now, once I go through all these sheets, what I'd like to do is spend a few minutes with the staff talking about the specifics, but I want you to get a general understanding of some of the impacts as it relates to the bonded indebtedness and how it will impact budgets into the future. So if you look at the purple, you see the $4,775,000 net debt, and you can see in FY10, it adds $680,000 to debt service. And if you -- and I layer that and show the existing net debt in blue, and then you have a total number in FY10 of $5.6 million of net debt, and that is 6.5 percent of the net debt of budget. And if you look at the chart, you can see the blue, which is existing debt, and then the purple, when you add on the $4.7 million. Moving to the next page, this is -- this is the only item that was not identified in the capital plan in terms of dollars and cents. This is an additional item that we're bringing forth to you. This is an additional proposed $1.5 million for the fire station. Now, you can see in orange, the $1.5 million, and if you go over to the right, you'll see the impact in FY10 of $138,000, and that's principal and interest, and that goes out, and you can see that goes through FY18. Then you see that the purple, we continue to keep that in there, and that adds on. Those are the citywide improvements, and then the existing net debt. For total net debt in FY10, if we go through with those three -- those two projects plus existing debt of $5.8 million, or 6.7 percent of the general fund budget. Now, moving to the next page, you see that we add in, in yellow, $40 million for the middle school, and this is net debt. And what I did is I basically put in a reimbursement rate of 37.5 percent. And now, I know that there are numbers out there that says that we can get 40 percent reimbursement, and as much as 43 percent reimbursement with energy efficiencies. The reason we came up with the 37.5 percent is it is a conservative number. It's based on what is allowable square footage, so the net number we are estimated, and it may change, it may be higher, and hopefully it is, but we want to be conservative, so we use the 37.5 percent. So the one thing about this particular project is it's a $40 million project. It is a project we will not bond immediately, all $40 million. So you'll see in fiscal year 10, there's a $400,000 impact to the budget. And 11, there's an $800,000 impact. In 12, there's a $1.2 million impact to the budget, and in 13, this is when it -- we bond the whole thing, and it comes online. And the key here is I've been working with the school department and the architect. The key for this one for us is the cash flow projections. So, for example, in the first year, we might see 10 percent of the $40 million spent, and that's why we have it laid out this way. We will not borrow the full $40 million until we actually need it. There's no reason for us to do it. And typically, what we'll do in this particular instance, and what we'll do in other instances, is what we'll use is what is known as bond anticipation notes, and you may hear them referred to as bands, bond anticipation notes. And what that means is that in any given year, let's say, we know we have, let's say we need $10 million for this particular project. We would go into the marketplace, and we would sell those bonds, the $10 million, and typically, they're about 75 basis points lower than the 4.25 percent or 3.5 percent. You get those renewable every year, so they're short-term financing. What you do is you only budget for interest only. So in, let's say, in the first year, you borrow bands of $10 million. Let's say you need another $10 million in the second year. Now you would have $20 million in bands until you came to having the full $40 million, and you have to then permanently finance the entire project within three years. So now you have a situation where that's why you have FY13, where it's fully bonded. So now you look down in FY10, and you can see that the total projected net debt service using -- having the middle school, the fire station, the citywide improvements, and the existing debt add up to approximately $6.2 million, or 7.1 percent of the budget. Now, going over to fiscal 13, that is probably our year, and you can see it on the chart, the yellow, the purple, and the orange, you can see how that -- the new debt is affected. You can see how it then peaks in 13. Does everybody follow that? The next page shows you what future debt on top of all that would be, because we're going to be doing capital improvement plans over the next few years. So we can't just stay static. We need to at least make those projections and give the city council an idea of what might be coming in the future, so they can make the decisions as they see fit. So in the teal color, you see the future projects, and these -- this is where it gets a little squishy, because they're -- these are projections, okay? And so you can see that we estimate in the first year, with future debt of $236,000, the middle school would add $400,000 in FY10, the fire station would add $138,000 for that additional appropriation, citywide improvements would be $680,000, and the existing debt would be $4.9 million, or a total net debt of 6.4 million, or 7.4 percent, 7.37 percent of the budget. And again, you look out at fiscal 13, and you look on your chart, and that is a year that we are concerned with. That is a year that we are bumping up to that 10 percent number that I've been talking to the city council about. We don't want to exceed that. And again, a lot of this deals with cash flow issues. Many of the projects, for example, the citywide improvements projects, that $4.7 million, we would -- we'd like to get the authorization, but the likelihood of us going into the marketplace to sell bands or permanently finance bonds probably be six months, because what we want to be able to do is we want to be able to go out and bid these projects, because you want to bid them in December and January. You don't want to wait until the springtime to bid those projects. So that is some of the rationale for getting authorization, but not going into the marketplace for approximately six months. Moving on to the next page, we talk about water, and existing net debt in the area of water. Now we're -- so now you've gone from the general fund into the water fund. The water fund is self-sustaining. It has its own rate that's established, and you can see the total water rate, using the tier-one rate, is $2.40 per unit. And the tier-one rate has 80 percent of our residential customers in it. So 80 percent of our residential customers are paying $2.40 per unit, and typically, our residential customers use about 10 units a month, and that would be about $24 a month. And you can see that the percentage of net debt service, as percentage of the rate, is about 18 and a half percent. That's pretty low, considering that type of operation. And the reason that is, is that we have no debt service on our existing plant. Our existing plant was built in 1957, and if you're -- you are aware that over the last few years, we've been talking about it, we've been identifying it for three or four years within the capital improvement plan, and that we have about 90 percent of the project designed. And we have requirements by the EPA, testing standards, that we need to achieve, and we're pretty much in need of a new plan to achieve those standards. Not -- our water is high quality. It's just that the standards have become so stringent in terms of the ability for regulators to test. The testing ability has become really, really sophisticated, so the requirements are much higher. And so we need to replace the plant, and of course, it's a 50-year-old plant that we never -- that the federal government paid for us when it was -- when P's came into existence. So that's the $2.40 on the existing rate, and if you follow it through, if we did no increases at all in terms of our debt service, as you can see in the chart, it would fall below the 18 percent number, all the way down to approximately 10 percent. Now we have a situation where we show existing net debt and the $25 million authorization for the MAD Verde Water Treatment Plant. And this particular project, from my perspective and the staff's perspective, is the number one project that we need to proceed with. This is a project that has been on the drawing board for a number of years, and also, the state is holding $5 million in state revolving loan fund money for us that we need to move on. This would allow us to save some money in the overall project. So we have the $25 million, then you show the in purple, and then the existing debt in blue, and it shows you what the impact would be in fiscal 10, and then on through fiscal 18. And you can see that, again, there is an increase as a percentage of the rate. And you can see in purple, the add-on to that rate, and the blue is the existing rate. Now, moving to the next page, again, we are showing other future debt. We have to replace water lines. We have to do a number of things to keep our system going. We also, 50 percent of our water comes from wells, and we have to make sure those are running properly, and those are maintained. So again, that would add on additional debt. You can see that in yellow, and how that would affect the water rate. And then, following to the next page, you can see the existing net debt for the sewer fund. Again, this is a separate fund outside of the water fund. It has a separate rate structure. And the rate structure that you're looking at here is, again, a tier-one rate structure, which, again, is 80 percent of our residential customers who fall into the tier-one rate. And again, they use about an average of 10 units per month. You can see our existing rate structure, 34 percent goes towards debt service of the $5 for the tier-one customer. And again, if we do nothing, we see that the percentage decreases, down to 18 percent in fiscal 18, but that is not a realistic situation, because when you move to the next page, you can see that the next -- the project that we already have on the books that we need to move on, again, by EPA mandate, is a sewer separation project down on State Street. In fact, we held a meeting with the owners of the properties down there just recently, and that's a $2.2 million project. And that project, again, is part of our overall wastewater separation project that we have going throughout the city. And that $2.2 million, you can see in purple, how it would affect the rate. In the first year, it would add 12 cents to the rate and take us from a $5 to $5.20 rate. We're trying to, again, smooth that out, so it isn't a major hit in any one year. Now, moving to the next page, we show in yellow, other future debt, and that future debt is the new wastewater treatment plant. And fiscal 15, we are hopeful that we will start construction of that new plant, but because it is an SRF project, the state revolving loan fund project, we expect to get 30 percent reimbursement. In addition, we hope to place all the debt under the SRF, the state revolving loan fund. And if we're able to do that, it's very advantageous to the community, given that now you do not have to pay anything on that debt. I think it's probably about -- it's a very minor amount, probably 1 percent. And you then do not have to start the final payments for 20 years until fiscal 18, because it's after the project is accepted. So that's the -- a great advantage of the state revolving loan fund. Number one, we get 30 percent grant. Number two, we don't have to pay on that until probably FY18 or 19. So that gives us a little breathing room in that particular instance. So what that is, is a very quick overview of debt service. What I -- what I'd like to do is I'd like to open it up for questions now, and as a second part of this, Your Honor, I'd like to then refer back to the memorandum that was in the packet to go into that and talk about three projects. I'd like to talk about the water project. I'd like to talk about the sewer project, and I'd like to talk about the fire station project. The $4.7 million for citywide improvements, what I'd like to do, unless I hear differently from the council, is I'd like to be able to go back to the staff, and I'd like to review all those projects that are in the citywide projects. That's about $4.8 million. And I'd like to come back to the city council with prioritized projects and saying, you know, "We do not feel we need to go out right now for X amount of these projects, but these are the projects that we need to do." And so I'd like to be able to come back at a future date for that. It's important that we don't lose sight of those projects, but I think the major projects that we need to address tonight are the water treatment plant, the sewer separation, which we're pretty much required to move forward on, and the final would be the additional money for the fire station. Does that seem okay, Your Honor?
That's fine. So we'll have the second part of that presentation, but now, questions in particular for the city manager, and I'll think surely there'll be opportunity for questions besides that, but on the presentation just offered. Councilor Edmard.
I've got a question on timing. You're looking for approval so that you can go get bids to keep these projects moving along. My concern is the financial markets are in enormous turmoil, I'll say, and even the municipal bond market is basically frozen, so you couldn't go bond today at 4.2 percent.
We don't intend to.
So, you know, my question is, when would the earliest you could see having to go to the bond market, like six months from now or nine months from now?
I would say in most of these instances, we're probably talking six months out. The idea is to get authorization so you can put these projects out to bid. And the -- what we will do is we will take pieces of these projects when we're ready to move forward on them, and we will do bond anticipation notes. And those are only -- we are only committed to one year within that instrument to pay that. It's interest only. So this is a tool that's used by communities all over the country. We typically haven't used this, because we haven't -- we've typically had projects that have a quick beginning and an end. So what we would do is we'd go out into the market, and we would sell the bonds, and we would have to comply, of course, with all the arbitrage rules, and we have to spend -- there's a certain timeline in which you can spend the money that's required by the federal government. But in the particular instance of the, let's say, the water project, we would take the $5 million. We've been promised $5 million from the state to be able to borrow $5 million under the SRF. What that allows us to do is we'll take that money first, okay, and we will spend it, and throughout the project, because we don't want to spend it all, because once you've spent that particular amount, you know, then the clock starts ticking on the repayment. Once we do that, we probably will be able to get through a larger portion of the beginning parts of the project. And in the event that the markets are still in flux, we'll use bond anticipation notes. We have three years, three years to -- so, for example, in the first year, if you have $10 million, and you do bands at, let's say, 3.5 percent, at the end of that year, you now have to go back into the marketplace, and let's say you need another $10 million, so now you've got $20 million in bands. So, you know, the 10, 10, the 20 that you have bond anticipation notes, and in the final year, let's say you have $5 million left, we've probably already -- we've already set that aside from the SRF. So in the third year, probably the third year, we would have to permanently finance the project, well, we have to by law. So what we would do is, throughout that project, we would watch and see how the rates were reacting, you know. So we have really, and I would defer to Judy, but we really have three years to watch the market. So in any given year, we have, you know, we have our bond anticipation notes, and let's say the markets turn very favorable, we would probably bond the entire amount and move into the market and get that bond. And like I said, the history of the city has been that we've issued bonds at 4 percent or less throughout the last 10 years, and at 3.8 percent most recently. Again, we are in historic times, and I can't tell you it's going to be all rosy in six months, but I can tell you this, that we will make sure the city council has kept apprised of the situation, and that for three years, we will want, you know, we will not go into the marketplace and permanently place this until we feel we have the best rate we possibly can get.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you have a follow-up?
I was just going to comment that if we have three years and the interest rates don't drop to something more normal, we've got a much bigger problem in these projects.
Well, you know, we had the '70s. When I was doing this work in 1979, 1980, yes, we were -- we had municipal rates at 8 percent, 9 percent. I would agree with you.
Councilor Y.
What's the assumption in the increase in the general fund budget? What did you use?
4 percent.
4 percent.
I'm sorry, I should have said that.
And then typically, these, the terms are 20 years.
Well, we look, for example, the -- we look at projects, the smaller projects, we try to do 10. For example, the middle school will be 20, the fire station will be 20. But when we can, we try to do 10-year, because we don't want to keep it on the books. We'd like to get it off the books as quickly as we can.
Councilor Kennedy.
I'm a little concerned and questioning, I guess, the treatment plant, and the fact that you're not going to start until 15th, when I thought we had seven years. We've completed our second year.
Well, fiscal 15 is five years away, and that's when we have it. And we can talk about that when the staff comes up, but that was always our intent to look to fiscal 15.
Well, I thought we were told that you were going to take three years to study the project and help the plan, and then we were going to...
Design it.
Move ahead on it.
Right. And that probably, the estimate is July -- you've got to remember, fiscal 15 is July 1, 2014, okay? Fiscal 15 is July 1, 2014, so that's four years out. That's pretty aggressive. This is -- this is actually an aggressive schedule, and we can talk about that more when the staff comes up, but this is an aggressive schedule that I've shown here. That would mean that we'd start construction on our...
Do we really have a choice but to have this schedule?
No, we're working with the EPA, and, you know, let's get it right, not right now, you know? And our whole premise in our conversations with the city council and with the public is that we want to make sure that we find a site that is a site that we could be satisfied for the next 100 years. And so when we talk about 2014, 2015, we're talking about July of 2014, which is not a long way away, given the amount of time and effort that we have before us to more or less take what I could almost equate to an oil tanker moving this way and stop it and turn it around and come back, because what we're looking at is a whole new view of what we want to do with our wastewater. And that view, I thought, was to move the wastewater treatment plant off of Pierce Island. And that has a huge amount of engineering studying that needs to be done, but we can have the staff come up, and we can specifically talk about that, and certainly be glad to.
Councilor Penelakis.
Yes. What do you figure that these projects are going to even out to for water rates and sewer rates?
Well, you see, counselor, you know, there's no way to say it any differently on the water rate, but water rates will be going up. And if you recall, we did, a number of years ago, look at the possibility of setting aside money for, you know, this day when we had to replace the plant, but we had other projects competing, and the councils in the past, and rightfully so, did not want to overload the taxpayers. So what this will do is affect the water user. We do have considerably low water rates as it relates to state-wide, you know, standards. It is an item that we need to do, and there's no way around it. It's a -- if any one project here needs to be done, it needs to be this water treatment plant. It's a 50-year-old plant, and if we don't do it this year, we're going to do it next year. And my whole concern is that we don't do what we did in the early '90s, which, again, we had an economic, if you recall, 1991, when P's closed, and when we had that major banking crisis in the early '90s. What happened in Portsmouth was there was a shut-off of all capital spending and all maintenance and capital spending. So what happened consequently is a lot of things started to bunch up. I don't believe we want to do that again, nor am I suggesting that we go and do more than we have to. My point is that we do the projects that are absolutely necessary, and I believe that the water plant is absolutely necessary. And I believe that the water plant is absolutely necessary. A 50-year-old plant doesn't meet EPA standards.
I understand that, but when we talk about water and sewage, we never mention how much of an increase it is, plus the increase on, I know it's there, but I'm talking about our taxpayers and our ratepayers. They're the same people that's getting an extended shot at both, on their taxes plus their watering sewer.
And what we try to do, Counselor, and we've done it in the budget, put it on the website, is we try to show in the budget the general taxation, the water and the sewer. And what we try to do is do the average taxpayer, and we have done that the last couple of years. And we will continue to do that. And it is a good point, where you can't just take the general fund and have property taxes here, you need to show the total impact. And I believe we've done that over the last couple of budgets and pointed that out. But again, I can provide that and show what that impact will be. The problem that you don't want to do is go too far out with making those assumptions, because you have to then put in a whole host of assumptions, increase in, you know, personal income and a few other things. Because if I just showed in 2018 what the effect would be on the average taxpayer, I'm not showing also what their, you know, their salary increases were and things of their ability to pay.
I just was trying to point out that we not only go up on the taxes, but each year we go up on the water and sewer rate, and there's the same people paying it.
Right. Absolutely. Right. The one thing I would say that you are absolutely right, the one thing about water, though, it is a utility that services Newcastle, Newington, Greenland, Portsmouth, and parts of Madberry. So we do have a larger rate base, but you are absolutely correct. It does affect the taxpayer in this community or the ratepayer.
Thank you.
Additional questions for the city manager, Counsel Clayburn? Just remembering, folks, we're going to have additional presentations part of this work session. Counsel Clayburn?
Is this saying that in the year 2013?
Which sheet are you on?
What page?
Well, actually, I'm on page 5, but...
Five of which one?
Is that the one that says in 2013, that's when the taxes will reach a peak, and then from, you know, it goes up to that point, and then it goes down, then it goes up?
Are you on page 5 that says existing net debt, 4.75?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. So, sorry.
So my question is, is that when the tax rate is going to go up the most?
That is when that service will be the biggest impact on the budget.
So that affects the tax rate?
Absolutely.
And the other answer is, that depends.
It all depends on, you know...
The operating budget.
Well, no.
Operating budget.
I mean, you could make decisions on the operating budget that would reduce the operating budget as well. What I'm trying to show you is that portion of the budget that would, once established, basically impact the budget for a number of years.
Further questions in this part of the work session? Hearing none at this point, John. Can you bring forward?
Sure. What I'd like to do is have Steve Parkinson, Chief Leclair, Dave Allen come forward and speak to some of their issues. Keep the memorandum that was in your work session packet. If you recall, in your work session packet, which is a section in your agenda, we did outline the various projects. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to, I'm not diminishing the importance of the general fund citywide improvements project, but what I'd like to, like I said at the beginning, I'd like the opportunity to go back to the city staff and evaluate every single one of these projects. I know right from the get-go, probably the ones we absolutely need to do, but I'd like to come back at a later date to talk to you about maybe doing some adjustments in this and bringing down some of those, and maybe holding those off. What I'd like to start with, though, I'd like to start with the wastewater treatment plant and the $25 million. My intent would be to ask for consensus from the city council tonight to bring back for first reading the $25 million bond issue for the Madbury Water Treatment Plant at your October 20th meeting. That would mean that the second reading would take place on November 10th, and that would be a public hearing and second reading. And the reason I'm asking that is because, and I'll let Dave talk a little bit more about it, we do, the state has been holding back, has found some SRF money to utilize as part of this project, and we're not sure they will hold it a whole lot longer. Dave, why don't you talk about the history of where we've been at with this project and how we're going forward?
Sure. As you all recall, we did do a wastewater, or water master plan several years ago, and part of that study, we were running into more and more troubles on the water treatment plant, just keeping it, as the city manager had mentioned, things such as the turbidity limit, and I think most of you have seen where we've had the violation, the turbidity violation. We've had about one a year. And a lot of that has to do with, as the city manager mentioned, the increasing, increasingly stringent regulations that we have to follow. Five years ago, the level of turbidity that we had to maintain was five or above, or five or below. Now that level is down to one. So, you know, the regulations have just ratcheted up. And, you know, we use that analogy about the 57 Chevy. It'll get you around, but it won't meet current emission standards, and that's what we have up there. The guys are doing as well as they possibly can in keeping that thing running, but it, there's going to come a point with future regulations that we know are in the pipeline coming down as part of the disinfection byproduct rules that are going to make it almost impossible in the next, say, five years for that plant to meet drinking water regulations. So, you know, having identified that project, we went through a pilot process where we looked at various technologies. We do have a unique reservoir that has, it's very shallow, has a lot of color to it, a lot of organics in it, and those are part of the source of that turbidity violation, the turbidity issues. And so we pilot-tested some technologies, found the best technology to deal with our specific water, went out for design. We've had it designed, we actually got to, at the 60% design, we went out for a value engineering and actually had another firm come in and make sure that we were actually, you know, we were as lean as possible on this thing, the best possible plant at the best possible dollar. We actually shaved about a million and a half dollars off of the original estimate through that value engineering process. And we've also, we've cut out some of the other features, another $2 million. And at the same time, we've designed this to be, you know, with the lead principles in mind, so we have some very innovative technologies that are going forward in this to improve the energy efficiency of this plant. At the same time, it's going to be run with the same staff that we have right now, certainly a much more reliable and a better plant for making sure that we meet all of our water quality standards.
So, Your Honor, what I would be looking for from the council this evening is some kind of consensus, not that you're approving it, that I'd be allowed to bring this back for first reading at the October 20th meeting with the potential to have the November 10th public hearing, give a full-blown presentation. Because what we need to do is, if, for whatever reason, if the council chooses not to go forward this year with this, we need to then, in good faith, turn back the $5 million to the state so some other project, it might be made available to, because they've been holding it back for us. So that would be what I'd like to do. And if at the end of the day, on November 10th, if the council chooses not to go forward with, then, fine, we would advise the state. But I think this is our number-one project, our number-one priority at this time. So we're kind of looking for consensus as it relates to the October 20th.
Are we going to ask questions, or do you want to have, see a straw poll on this one? Questions?
I just have a real quick question.
Go ahead.
If we're talking $25 million, is that net of the $5 million from the state?
No.
So we're talking the $25 million?
Because I need the authorization for the full $25 million, so $20 million that we'd borrow on our own.
Okay, so it's a $25 million project cost, okay.
Counsel Dwyer? Same question?
That was the same question. And then a second question is whether there are any incentives associated with the lead on this, like there are in some other projects?
Well, what we would be able to do is, we would get grant money back from PS&amp;H on things like the variable frequency drives and the high-efficiency motors, but nothing beyond that.
Counsel Kennedy?
Will any of the other communities be putting any money towards this upfront?
It's part of their rate.
No, beyond, like beyond the rate, is there any grant money from them or anything that they can pull in to help us out here?
Now, unfortunately, unlike the wastewater side where we have that 30% grant, the water side does not have those types of grant opportunities.
Further questions? Okay. Do we want to authorize him to bring it back? There's plenty of time to talk about it. I see heads nodding, enough heads.
So I'll bring that back for first reading for the October 20th. All righty. The next item I'd like to talk about is the resolution for bond authorization of $2.2 million for state street utility upgrades. And again, maybe Peter Rice could come forward and speak to it with David. I want you to stay right there, David. And this is a project, again, this is all part of our overall sewer separation project that we've been mandated by the Environmental Protection Agency to undertake. And one of the major things that we want to try to do is get as much of this done before we build a new wastewater treatment plant, because every bit of water that we get out, that is, doesn't need to be treated, allows us to be more efficient in the design and construction of the plant. Peter Rice?
Good evening. This project is intending to address three things. One is the EPA mandate requiring that we do these sewer separation projects. Two, the age of the infrastructure in the street is over 100 years old and is really in, it needs to be upgraded. The sections of it are starting to collapse. And thirdly, probably most importantly, is the bridge schedule. Memorial Bridge is scheduled to be upgraded, which is going to impede traffic significantly. And we want to take advantage of coordinating with that project so that we don't add additional stress to the property owners down along that section by digging up the street after it's been shut down for a number of years due to the bridge project. So that's really the thrust of this project, as John said, you know, is to address the sewer separation issues, but at the same time, we're going to leverage monies to do street improvements, sidewalks lighting, and really try to do what we've done elsewhere in the city and try to, and really do some improvements that are aesthetically beneficial to the city as well.
The other thing to note here is, this is one of those projects, the SRF, where we get 30% grant. So we will get a 30% grant on this $2.2 million. In addition, I believe that we'll be able to do, use this SRF for loan?
Yeah.
Okay. So that, again, until the project is done and completed, we will not have to pay on any principal and interest until that is completed. So that satisfies, I think, some of the concerns that we have out there. So that one, I would say, is our number-two project that we'd like to see go forward. And, Your Honor, I'd like to see if the city council gives us consensus to do the first reading for October 20th on that as well.
Questions for the city manager, Peter Rice, or anybody else? Counsel Dwyer?
Well, this may sound like I wasn't paying attention, but let me just ask it. Do, this does not come, does this come out of our water and sewer, or?
This will be a water rate, this will be a sewer rate impact.
This will be sewer, okay.
And 30% of the $2.2 million will come back in a grant, and the remaining amount will be borrowed through the state revolving loan fund at a lower interest rate, and timing of repayment would be later on.
So that's taken into, yes.
Yes, it is.
That's on page 10?
Right. And you can see the impacts on that, on the rate. I believe it was 12 cents in the first year?
20 cents.
20 cents in the first year?
Oh, no, you're right, 12 cents.
12 cents, okay, sure.
Counsel Smith? Counsel Smith, Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you. In the engineering of this side, of this project, if we did move the sewage treatment plant off Pierce Island to another facility, is it being engineered so that it can, if it possibly be a reverse flow coming down here, or would we have to dig up or do a different direction of?
The infrastructure that we'd be working on wouldn't be impacted by a reversal of flow if we were to relocate the plant. Everything comes down to the low point in the city currently, and it would continue to do that, because to reorient it by gravity would mean you'd have to have much deeper, if you think about it in terms of a hill, you bring it to the bottom of the hill, and then you pump it to where you want to go. So currently, it comes to the bottom of the hill, it goes to the Mechanic Street Pumping Station, and it's pumped out to Pierce Island. What will happen is, it'll come to the bottom of the hill, and likely, if we are able to get it off the island, we'd end up reorienting the force main coming out of the Mechanic Street Station to pump it instead of the island, we'd pump it to the new location. So hopefully, we're able to utilize some, you know, the existing force mains that are out there. Deer Street's force main currently comes over to Mechanic Street. If we can reverse the flow, utilize a section of that, we won't have to do as much digging as a result of that. But the State Street project, it's not wasted money.
Thank you. Further questions? Counsel Kennedy?
Peter, not tonight, but when you give the presentation to the city council again, can you tell them if there's any parking spots that are going to be gone because of the street curbing and everything that's done here?
Counsel, at this point, we are just really getting started on the design, and we had a public meeting last Wednesday and got input from the property owners and the business owners, and parking was probably, you know, the most critical, in addition to wanting to calm traffic and keeping parking and making it pretty and keeping parking. It was very, you know, apparent that that was priority number one. And so what we're doing now is, we've gone back and we're digesting what was presented, and we're trying to come up with alternatives that'll solve that need.
If you just keep a praise, if you're going to lose a spot, that'd be great.
Yep.
Further questions? Counsel Spier?
Is this the grants for the sewer, are they similar to the grants for the school funding in that they chip away the capital and the principal only and not?
No.
Or they take care of both?
This is, this is a straight-up grant.
A little more generous than, okay.
Further questions? Do we have a consensus to go forward on this one? Looking around, I see heads nodding, enough.
Okay.
Remember, ample time to discuss in the future in some specificity.
Then I'd like to go back to the resolution for bonding authorization of up to $1.5 million for the fire station two, and I'd like to turn it over to the fire chief and for his conversation with us.
Good evening. I'm in your packet. You see the memo from myself and Steve Parkinson. We are both partners.
That's about to the second to the last page of your, about third to the last page, part of the packet that I gave you. There is, say, probably a summary sheet, Attachment A, that probably is the most useful sheet to turn to. It's about three from the back of the packet. Chief?
Thank you. You'll remember when this first hit the CIP for $2.5 million, when we thought we're going to add on to 27 on Lafayette Road, it was bumped up to $3.5 million in the 2005 capital. Construction costs since that time have risen about 22% to present date. Our construction manager estimates the lead certification portion of this project is approximately $200,000. The construction cost for this building equates to about $295 a square foot, and that's everything. That's landscape, furniture, everything to put this project up. This is in line with current fire station projects across the country. If you remember, the 27 on Lafayette Road plan was designed to fit on that 9/10 of an acre, with a compressed station of 12,578 square feet. This design had very limited bay depth, didn't allow for drive-through bays, very small training room, limited parking, marginal access, and a limited amount of landscaping. We went for the new property, which the city council purchased at 3,000 Lafayette Road, had our architects and engineers rework the building to fit that site, including some additional apparatus-based space, because we're no longer limited by the size of the property, additional training room space for a total building area of 17,474 square feet. This new location, of course, requires more landscaping, more pavement, more green space, better drainage and advanced traffic signal controls for the intersection of Ocean and Lafayette. Cost estimates for that design were $5.2 million. Through value engineering and reduction of the apparatus space from four bays down to three bays, the total area of the new station is now at 15,840 square feet. We have approximately $3.1 million left for construction. We need the $1.5 million for construction to complete the project.
Questions for the chief, city manager, anybody else? Counsel Dwyer?
Oh, for comparison, am I remembering that the cost per square foot of the library was like $2.25? Is that about right? So, you know, I, why, why is the cost, given the 22, I understand the cost of materials, which is significant, but why would a fire station cost so much more per square foot than the library?
Dave, maybe the $2.25, did that include furnishings in the library?
I don't think it did, and I would have to check on that, but...
See, this does include the furnishings. Now, if you backed out the furnishings and landscaping, let's say, because I think to get to your question, the apple's apple. Steve, what do you, is that more in the 250 range, 260 range? I'm not sure.
I believe it was $245 a square foot, but that's just construction. Then you'd add in all your landscaping, paving, drainage, all the rest of that stuff. So $245 a square foot is just the building cost. Total project cost, we asked them to break it out that way so you could understand it, total project is about $295 a square foot. That's turnkey, operational, ready to go.
Counsel Heimannik?
Yeah, I'm confused, and I'm just getting involved, but it seems...
Yeah, I'm confused, and I'm just getting involved, but it seems though you've done a roughly a half a million dollars of engineering money has been spent for these numbers. And this was.
Jerry, can I ask you to speak into the mic and a little louder? You can pull the torch, Jerry.
A half a million dollars of engineering money has been spent out of the original bonding or the appropriation. And this was just bonded, as I understand, in June, like three, four months ago? And what surprises me is we have all this inflation a few months later. It doesn't make sense to me that all of a sudden, since June, the cost has gone up a million dollars. Did we forget about escalation for the last three years, or?
No, actually, at the 11th hour, when we had architects all done, engineering all done for 2700 Lafayette Road, is when we noticed the 3,000 Lafayette, when that came available for sale. Part of that money that's already been spent is having our architects redesign, our engineers redesign, and going through the whole process for another piece of property.
So it's less about escalation and more about redesign?
Correct.
A little of both.
Yeah, some of both, but.
Once we, you know, we were going down one path, and we're almost to the point that that was ready to go, went 3,000 Lafayette, now we turned everybody around, took the design, the basic design that we had, the 2700, and then looked at all the things that we couldn't do at the original location, such as the drive-through bays, so we're not backing into the facility. We've got longer bays so that the, the.
But all those things increased the cost?
All those things increased the cost, but also, you know, our engineering fees that we had already spent now had to be reduplicated for a new site.
Counsel Kennedy.
Um, I'm just going to be really open. I'm a little disillusioned by the process here. I represent the Council on the Fire Station Number Two, and a meeting was canceled, and then all of a sudden, in the paper, um, we have a 1.5 increase, and no one, I never sat at a meeting where, where we were talking about that. So I'm a little disillusioned by that. I'm disillusioned, along with Counsel Hapmanek, that this was just bonded in June, and we're looking for another 1.5. I also am disillusioned because I hear from people that this, that in June, when this was budgeted, it was told to them that this would not, the price that we budgeted would not come close to this, to the amount needed. If we knew then we needed an amount, then how come we didn't come forward with it and really look at it and budget it then? So I'll have to be honest with you, I'm, I'm kind of disillusioned with this process that I had to get told about the increase in the paper when I sit on the committee, and the community members were told in June that this was not enough money when we budgeted. So I'm just, I'm feeling a little disillusioned by the process.
Anyone here to respond?
Yes, the Station Committee meeting we were trying to have prior to the, going to the City Council was canceled because our architects and engineers couldn't make the meeting. We knew we were coming to the City Council, we really didn't know a date. We tried to get a, a committee meeting set up before the date, but obviously very difficult to do. The news, the only person that showed up for the, for the meeting, or was there for the meeting that was canceled, was the papers, and they were looking for an agenda and wanted to know what was going on with the project.
Um, I'd like to, I was, I showed up, and I'm at your fire sta, I was at your fire station, and then I was told that it was canceled, and, because I didn't get the message. And then I went home and got it on my answering machine, but I did show up. Just clarification.
We had estimates from the architect as to what the building could cost. We didn't have the architect and construction manager on board or working together to do the costing out of the process, which is where we would have no way of knowing what the station would cost until we got to that process. We did get to that process, we brought it to the City Manager, he asked us to pare it down, that's why the station went from four bays to three bays. We pared it down as much as we can, trying to reduce that cost of the building, and they were able to get it to $4.6 million. From the three and a half that was first talked about in 2005, to the four and a half that we're talking about now, pretty much makes up that jump in construction cost and the reengineering for the new site.
I, I would, I'd like to say that I believe that we did, you know, the, the ball was dropped, and certainly shouldn't have come out that way. And I was equally disappointed that, that happened, but it happened, and now we've got to deal with it. And you make a good point, Counsel. We try not to do that, you know that historically, we try to keep people informed to the nth degree, but it happened, so we need to deal with it. The one thing I would have to say is that the original project that had 12,500 square feet was going to be a tough, tough site, and it was going to be a station that would have done the job, but when, when the committee and the Fire Chief were able to find this other location, it allowed for the city to create a station that will last 40 years, you know, for, I, I cringed at the thought of, for the next 30 years, that they were going to back fire trucks into that station at 2700 Lafayette Road. And I, from a risk management standpoint, to bring them around, the coming through, we added space. This was a lot higher number 30 days ago, when I asked the Chief, when we, when he talked to me about the, the additional costs, it was going to be about $600,000 more, and I asked him to go back and work out elimination of a bay, and we're, and he was able to do that. And so that is why it's here before you tonight. The process was probably not as smooth as we would have liked it to be, and, and I, I would agree on that. And, you know, it's, it's not typical, it's, it's untypical of us to have that type of thing happen. So, that being said, I think we need to move ahead on this particular project. I believe we're committed to this project, and again, I think the process should, we'll learn from this, and as we go forward, we'll certainly have more frequent meetings of that building committee, and, and I know the Chief would agree with me on that as well. Counsel Smith, Counsel Dwyer, then Counsel Claver.
Thank you. I know what, when we had talked before, is the, the one, the 4.6 million, roughly, is that including the possible sale of the existing building and land?
No, that, we are estimating, in fact, on your agenda tonight, you'll see, there's a report back from the Planning Board, which the Counsel asked me to go and get, that allows for the disposition of that parcel. So once new, the new fire station is open, we can immediately market that parcel and sell it. We are estimating, and again, it's an estimate, that we'll be able to recover about $750,000. That is below what our estimate, what our, what the, the appraiser has appraised that site, but I would take a conservative number of $750,000, and that would, as the Counsel requested, would be immediately up for sale if we were able to go forward with this tonight.
When we had discussed this before, the idea of it was possibly that we wouldn't include furnishings and so, and the landscaping costs and the construction costs, because if we sold the building, we could have used the monies for those, because we were told that that money could not be used to immediately take down the debt.
Right. What I, what I did say, and what we did review, I think there were some questions that came up as relates to permanently financing. It would be my intent to get authorization, because I need authorization to legally proceed with the project. My intent would be to hold off on permanently financing this project as long as I could, doing bond anticipation notes. And in the event that, once we move the, the Fire Department over to the new fire station, we would immediately, and if we know it's six months out, let's say, that they're going to move in, we would, we would start working on the RFP process to sell that property. And immediately, when they move over, we would dispose of that property, and it would be my hope, and let's say we only recover $500,000 on that, I would not permanently finance that. I would use a bond anticipation note, as I've described tonight, and I would basically not renew that note, and I would then only bar, I mean, I need, but I need the authorization. I cannot move forward on a project without the authorization, I legally can't do that. So my intent would be to, if we have on our schedule that in four months, the fire station, the old fire station is now going to be moved over on this date to the new fire station, I would immediately work with the, the legal departments and others to put out for bid that parcel of land and sell it, and come back to the City Council with a proposal for somebody to buy it, and then we would sell it, get our money, pay off our bond anticipation note, and only permanently finance that amount minus the, what we were able to sell the building for. But again, I need the authorization at the level that we're requesting, but we, you do not have to spend your entire authorization. You are allowed to spend up to, but if we were, if we're able to sell for $500,000, that would be $500,000 less than, than we would permanently finance. Counsel Dwyer.
I, I'm okay with all this theory, but I'd like to see a budget. I mean, I like, I think what's confusing is, you know, we've, we had our, our heads kind of wrapped around the old one, we sold a building, we've moved, we've changed. I think it would be really helpful for the Council to actually see a, a block budget of, of costs, because the, the, and I know this isn't quite the right way to think about it, but that, that differential between 2.45 and 2.95 is hard for me to wrap my head around, given other kind of comparable costs. So I'd like to see what that's going for.
Right. My, my suggestion would be, is that the Chief call a building committee meeting. We have it here at City Hall, and that we invite, we tell council members when it's going to be, and we have the committee meeting, and, and what I would like to do is have the ability to come back for first reading. Again, this, you know, first reading doesn't mean you have to approve $1.5 million. You can do less, but I'd like to keep it moving forward, but I, I would say that before the 20th, and sooner than later, that the Fire Chief and the architect meet with the committee and go through this line by line and talk about the issues. Uh, Chief?
The Station Committee is scheduled for Wednesday night.
It is scheduled for this Wednesday?
This Wednesday, Station One.
Okay. All right. And if any council members cannot make that, we, we, what I'd like to do, Chief, is I'd like to have packets of information that are handed out so I can get it out to the City Council. Yeah.
Is that meeting here?
Uh, where are you going to have it, Chief?
The Station One.
Station One.
Do you, do you have enough room there, Chief?
Uh, for the, yeah, for the committee, there's usually enough room.
Well, if other, you'll have enough room if other council members choose to attend.
What time? Seven?
Six.
Six o'clock.
Counselor Novlin Claver.
Um, well, I just have a question. Is it possible to do it in stages, to build just two bays first and then add one later on, or?
We've already downs, actually, no, we downsized it from four bays to three bays, two bays. If we're going to have a two-bay station, there's no sense doing the project. That's all we have now.
But I think, Your Honor, many of these questions need to come up at the committee meeting. It will help to ferret out some of these issues. And again, I apologize for the way it came out. It was unintended, it's just a matter of certain circumstances that happened. Counsel Dwyer.
And this may be early to know this, but what, because of all the lead requirements, what do you anticipate as, you know, operational savings or, or payback time as part of that? Because I think that would be a helpful thing to know.
So unless I hear differently, what I will bring back on the 20th is first reading for the Madberry Project, the State Street Project, and the Fire Station. The Council may or may not go forward with any of them, but I'd like to at least have some understanding as how we would, we would proceed. Do we have a, do we have enough of a consensus to get people to put it on for this consideration for first reading? I see enough nyes. I'm sure it will be a lively discussion. Any further comments or questions on this? We have a lengthy meeting and a lot of people here for various reasons. Any other questions on this productive session? That, we will close. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Spear, my apology.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. Um, are we not discussing the first resolution?
Uh, no, because what I'd like to do is, I'd like to spend some time with the staff, and what I'd like to come back is say to you, you know, we have $4,775,000 that we identified in the capital plan, and here's what we think we can hold off on.
Okay.
And bring that down so that we don't bond that full amount.
How, as we've discussed, some of the increase was due to the change in the location, but other parts of the increase were simply due to rising construction costs over the past three years. It makes me a little bit nervous, looking, approving the $25 million for the water treatment plant. How, what kind of assurances do we have that the same thing won't happen with the water treatment plant, or the middle school plant, which is, and a percentage increase in the $40 million becomes $50 million, you know, similarly?
Well, that is a concern of ours, and, and the, the pricing that we have right now was just recently generated. I mean, it's, it's a, it's priced based on a 90% design plans that, that we can do. So, you know, those prices are comfortable as of today, and we have some contingency in there, but very little. I mean, there's, there's not a lot, there, there's not a lot of fluff in this thing, so, but you, you don't know till you bid it. You know, the other thing is, there's a, there is a good bidding climate in these types of projects right now, because a lot of companies don't have work. So, you know, you have the materials going up, but you also have an economy where, where people are looking for jobs, so.
Counsel Hapmanek.
I just comment on materials. Copper prices have dropped 40% in the last two months at the commodity level. Steel prices, steel companies just dropped steel prices 20%. So this economy is causing, you're going to see a deflation over your estimates, which is helpful.
Assistant Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'm looking forward to the debate and more information on the three resolutions that we're expecting, but I'd also like to thank City Manager, this particular handout showing the future debt services are going to be a real helpful tool in us in planning and predicting what's going to happen, because it, there is a lot going on, helps to lay it out, and I, hopefully, if we can stay on track with these things, we can sort of keep everything as under control as possible.
Thank you. Counsel Spear.
I just wanted to kind of bring in the goings-on with the fire station and with the middle school bonding, and I was looking, all in the same thought, looking at page five, where you have the, not of the memo, but of the original, of this thing you handed out. Where you have in FY '13, the 9.84% debt service out of the general fund budget. You know, I was of two minds about the $40 million for middle school. On the one hand, looking at this, it looks like we can afford it in terms of a percentage of operating, or a percentage of the general fund budget, and that, to me, is encouraging. Because I was pretty nervous about $40 million, it's a lot of money, however, we're going to pay for this. But if you look at the grand scheme of things, that we have been holding back currently, currently, the debt service is 6%. Perhaps you could look at it, we've been saving money in the past few years, so that in anticipation, we can, we can have this large project. On the other hand, you look at FY '13, and you see, you know, we, $40 million is also a good top-end goal. I don't see a lot of wiggle room to go much beyond that, because then you start getting, what happens is, as long as you keep, we want to keep the taxes low, you start bumping into operating budgets and, and other things like that, which wouldn't be good for the city either. And, and so I think, this is, I, I love this chart, and I think it really explains the story very well. Mentally, when I was trying to think about how do I finance, you know, my own home, redo the kitchen or whatever, I said, we don't have the money this year, maybe I can postpone it and do it in five years, I'll save up some money. Well, the fire station illustrates so well, the longer we wait on any, on this, especially the big-ticket items, really, the costs go up so fast, and so a $40 million school, five years from now, maybe we'll put in $45 million, $50 million. That's not going to get you what you can buy today, as the 22% construction costs illustrate. So I just wanted to make those points.
Thank you, Counsel Spear. All right, we're going to be starting a five-minute recess, we're going to close this one down and get started, we have a lot of people coming this evening. Thank you very much. Thanks again to the City Manager and staff.